We would like to stand for a moment of silence. That's been a county board tradition. In this moment of silence, we think of those that, both across the world and at home, that have had senseless violence taken against them. So we'll start that with a moment of silence and then move into the national anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with authority and justice
Clerk, we'll do a little call, please.
Commissioner Jewell?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
Commissioner McDonald?
Here.
Commissioner Nelson?
Here.
Commissioner Yugavich?
Present.
And Chair Commissioner Boyle?
Here. At this time, citizens will be allowed to address the board on items not on agenda. Speakers will be limited to five minutes apiece. We have one speaker up here, Dan Johnson. Just identify yourself and your address, please.
Good morning, Dan Johnson. I'm his companion. I'm here on behalf of the St. Louis County Planning Shack Police Holders Association. Four of the incumbent commissioners are very familiar with us. Welcome Commissioner Olson and Commissioner... I'm just here to say hi and let you know that we are active. We have an annual meeting in April. We invite all the commissioners. In the past, we usually get two, three, four of you. We welcome your comments. Contact us if you have any issues with leases or would like to be involved. Questions, comments?
No. How many are on your... How many members do you have?
That, I don't specifically know how many dues-paying members. Commissioner Nelson, how many people did we have at our last meeting? Probably 100 leases, maybe?
Mr. Chair, there were over 100 people in attendance at the annual meeting and I, if I may, Mr. Chair, I want to thank you for carrying on a proud tradition of your former president who is here every year in January to greet the board. And we miss him, okay?
He's a great guy. Don Sol, if you know Don.
Not picking on you, but we do miss Don, okay?
That's fair. It certainly above me in any standard.
And he moved into your district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Anyone else that would like to address the board on issues not on the agenda? Seeing none, though, for those items that are on the agenda, on the committee of the whole, it's allowed to address the board. At that time, the motion is on the floor. Time specific, we'll start the public hearing. Clerk reads the introduction.
The purpose of this public hearing is to socialize public informed prior considering the St. Louis County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. This public hearing is being conducted pursuant to applicable Minnesota statutes and the standard rules of the county board. A copy of the standing rules is available upon request. A thorough record will be made of the proceeding. According to the request, all speakers sign in and state your name and address after beginning of your testimony. Both verbal and documentary evidence will be accepted by the board. The order for the hearing will be as follows. First, county administration will make the initial presentation. Second, representatives of other governmental entities may appear to give testimony. Third, supporters of the proposed actions may appear to give testimony. Next, opponents of the proposed action may appear to give testimony. Lastly, other comments or evidence will be public. Commissioners may question witnesses at the end of their testimony or at the end of all testimony.
Clerk Chapman. First, we'll open this up to county administration for initial presentation.
Thank you, Chair Boyle. On behalf of administration, Director Hayden will be leading the introduction and providing the comments to what has been a very thorough, very exhaustive, in a good way, outreach. And I think we're ready to update our plan for sure. And also here is... Mary's here. And so we'll probably tag-team this, but we'll give the initial presentation. Be available for questions, obviously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner is Barbara Hayden, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Well, we're proud to be here. It's been a long process getting to this point. Just as some background, St. Louis County has operated under 27 individual land use plans that were developed primarily in the 1970s and 80s. We have areas of the county that are not covered in that plan, and we have other individual plans that have been added over the years. In 2017, the board authorized us to enter into a professional service agreement with SRF Consulting Group and to assist the county in developing this new plan. We worked with SRF to develop this plan, and I just want to point out, too, that this is just another important use of the county's Community Mountain Lock Grant funds. We were able to utilize that funding for this professional service contract. So following, there's a kind of an overview of the public outreach that we went through. We had 24 meetings in the summers of 2017 and 18. We had eight public workshops that were located in four locations throughout the county. We had 16 focus group meetings that were held with various interest groups and agencies such as trails, clubs, utilities, government agencies, economic development, tourism. The St. Louis County, we met with the St. Louis County Township Association on two occasions and then did individual follow-ups with six other townships or lake associations. We did extensive news blasts and public cases, and we did separate mailings repeatedly throughout the process that went to townships. Some of the areas, the initial concerns that came up and which have been addressed in this plan were concerns on townships and how they would be able to be continued to be involved in the process, especially in providing input on public hearings. And that, we have built that into the process. Notification goes to townships when we have issues before the planning commission or the Board of Adjustment. There also was concerns raised about improving broadband, enforcement of our current ordinance, the need to not be granting too many variances, issues of affordable housing and planning for wildfires. In addition, other areas of concern, as always, are issues with gravel pits, preservation of ag land, vacation rentals by owners was a big issue, emergency response limitations, and promotion of outdoor recreation trails. The first step of this process was to develop what we call our land use report, which is the background data, and that has been completed. And then the draft of our report, which I know we have... You've mailed a hard copy. We do have some additional ones here today if anybody wants some. Documents includes executive summary, goals, objectives for maintaining and preserving the natural resource, economic development, recreation, tourism, transportation, public safety, and land use. It also has specific implementation actions that should be taken out by various departments. I also want to thank the departments that have been involved in this, particularly Public Works and the Land Department, on really helping us develop this plan. I also want to point out and give recognition to Mary Anderson, who's here today, who was primarily on point and championing this plan to this finish line, at least today. Also Jennifer Bourbonet in our planning department. The planning commission was updated throughout the process. At every monthly meeting during this 18-month period, they were provided updates. The planning commission held three workshops, one in November of 2017, one in April of 2018, and one in September. In addition, they held a public hearing on April 18, 2018, and unanimously approved to move the plan forward. Following the planning commission meeting, the town of Kenosha elected to turn their zoning over to St. Louis County, and a copy of the town of Kenosha's land use map was submitted to the county in order to draft that and incorporate it into our plan. So the planning commission held a public hearing in December 13 of 2018, which incorporated Kenosha's land use plan into the comprehensive plan. Previously, we brought to the board a resolution of accepting the zoning and with the effectuation date being February 1. So after this hearing, it is our recommendation that the board move forward and adopt this plan with the effective date of February 1, 2019. I'm happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Thank you, Director Hayden. Well, for questions for Director Hayden, commissioners? Commissioner Djukovic?
I've got so much questions, but I, you know, being new compared to some of the others on the board, it was really nice working with the group and I got updates and information all along the way. So that was really nice to see that you were kept in the loop the whole way through.
Any other commissioners? Thank you, Director Hayden. Next up, we'll have representatives from other governmental entities that may appear and give testimony. Any governmental entities? Seeing none, supporters of the proposed action may appear and give testimony? Any supporters? Seeing none, opponents of the proposed action may appear and give testimony? Any opponents of it? Seeing none, other comments or evidence from the general public?
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
And move to close.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jewell. All those in favor of closing the public hearings, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there someone to move?
I would move the resolution to pause.
Or by Commissioner Djukovic? Any discussion, commissioners? Commissioner, answer.
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Boyle. I think it's really important, the work that has been performed here. One of the main reasons for getting something like this accomplished is to open up one of the first questions you get asked when you're applying for a grant. Do you have a comprehensive plan? But for a lot of our smaller communities, no, that was not necessarily the case. This now takes care of that. There is a comprehensive plan in place. I really appreciate the work that's been done on this by our planning commission, those citizen members that dedicate a tremendous amount of time and energies to this, and I think they need to be remembered. I would also like to recognize both Jenny Bourbonet and Mary Anderson. This might be one of Mary's last appearances in front of us. I don't know when she's leaving us, but the incredible work she's done in physical planning is the reason why your phones don't ring, folks. And that is the efforts that are being put forth. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Any other commissioners? I can't just echo, thanks for all the time and work you put in. This takes a significant amount of time. Thank you both for making our jobs a lot easier. Let's bring us to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Out of the public hearing. Commissioners, next up, we have the consent agenda.
So move.
Moved by Commissioner Olson, seconded by Commissioner Jewell. Commissioners want to pull anything? No. Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commissioners, we'll move right into the regular agenda. We have two items. First item is under Public Works. It's the cooperative agreement with the town of Friedenberg for the 2019 maintenance striping project.
I would move it, Mr. Chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Nelson, seconded by Commissioner Djukovic. Administrator Gray.
Thank you, Chair Boyle. Commissioners, this was discussed at the Committee of the Whole at some length. This is a cooperative agreement with the town of Friedenberg for a 2019 planned maintenance striping project. Not unlike a number of maintenance agreements or cooperative agreements you're going to see on the upcoming Committee of the Whole meeting, this is something, an outreach that we do, working with our townships and municipalities to ensure that the most cost-effective solutions can be brought forward when it comes to striping, crack sealing, other maintenance activities where we afford, through this cooperative agreement arrangement, the opportunity for the towns and cities to achieve the best pricing. And this, of course, occurs when we're working in that geographical area. So it's a convenience to, and a price point accommodation to the cities and townships. And we'll have a number of these coming forward throughout the coming months, including today. So in this particular case, this is to authorize a cooperative agreement with the town of Friedenberg for a 2019 maintenance striping project. The funds will be received from the town of Friedenberg to the extent that they use the materials for their planned township broad striping.
Administrator Gray. Commissioner, comments? Commissioner Jewell?
I won't say anything more than I said at our meeting of the Committee of the Whole. I haven't learned anything to alleviate my concerns over the past two weeks, and we'll vote again, no. And I could, I will say that there are additional items under our upcoming meeting of the Committee of the Whole, which I will choose not to pull down, because I think I've made the point.
Commissioner Jewell, any other commissioners' comments? Seeing none, we'll move this to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. Next up, commissioners, we have central management and a governmental committee. Appointment of two representatives to the Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency for five-year terms, expiring December 31, 2023. This was tabled at our last meeting, but I have a motion to take off the table.
I would move that we put this on back on the floor for discussion.
And seconded by Commissioner Djukovic. Those in favor of taking off the table, say aye.
Aye.
He's off the table. Commissioners, do I have someone that would...
Mr. Chair, I have a resolution that I would like to move as an alternative or as a resolution to deal with this item. Written copies are being passed up.
All right. Before we go on, do we have... Do you want to move the changes on this?
I would move this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Do I have support from Commissioner Djukovic? I got support from him. Why don't we go with... Do we want to start with Administrator Gray and then move into the changes you want to do? Commissioner Nelson?
Well, thank you, Chair Boyle. Commissioners, the action that was tabled was regarding the appointment of two representatives to the Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency, AEOA. These are for five-year terms. This is different than prior years, when we have historically had three representatives and an alternate. So there was a discussion about revisiting the change in the bylaws and discussions with, further discussions with AEOA, and I believe that is the alternate resolution. It reflects some outcomes of those discussions, restoring a third position to St. Louis County as a member of the AEOA governing board. So the tabling motion was to have a foretime for that dialogue. So today, before you, the alternate resolution is for the appointment of three representatives to the Arrowhead Economic Opportunity Agency, all for five years.
Commissioner Nelson?
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Boyle. I did have an extensive conversation with the executive director of AEOA, Mr. Carlson. And, Mr. Chair, I would caution this board that this resolution really takes us through the August or early September timeframe, because one of the positions that has been a longstanding position at AEOA was for the fifth district commissioner, was one of the three seated St. Louis County commissioners. And even though AEOA eliminated that in their bylaws, I really think that it's important that we maintain that tradition here at the St. Louis County Board. I have offered my name to... I've offered up the slate of Commissioner Djukovic, Commissioner McDonald, and myself serving through that August timeframe, when, again, this board will have to deal with this matter again as we look at filling that position. And I actually anticipate by then we'll see a small change in the AEOA bylaws that'll allow us to get back to the alternate position. Mr. Chair, I was very concerned about these, which is why we passed the resolution back in May, opposing these bylaw changes. But as it turns out, there are three positions open for elected officials in St. Louis County at the present time, and these would fill those three positions. I think it's important that we keep strong representation on the AEOA board. I would caution folks that this is an agency that deals with, in the neighborhood of $30 million worth of federal monies. And I think it's really, really important that St. Louis County, representing 28,000-plus people, continue to have this strong presence on the board. It is a partnership with many of our area counties. Mr. Chair, I'd also like to mention that, you know, one St. Louis County commissioner, just one, represents more people than all 26 other members of the AEOA board. That's one commissioner. When you take and put that into the context where three St. Louis County commissioners are present, now you're talking, you know, 90,000 people or thereabouts within AEOA's service delivery area. When you consider the importance and the impact of all of the programming, the transportation system, again, St. Louis County commissioners need to retain these three seats on the AEOA board and, again, continue to be a very strong voice there for the people of our region. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before I get to Commissioner Jewell, was... Do we have anybody from, a representative from AEOA at the meeting today?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Carlson, knowing the results of the conversation that we had and working with Deputy Administrator Fitzinger on this resolution as it came before us, he has declined to come here today. He did have a conflict, but has declined to come here today, knowing that this would be in front of us.
Commissioner Jewell?
So let me clarify. So the new bylaws say two county, St. Louis County commissioners and a third elected official, and we're simply going to fill all of... We're going to fill that additional elected official position with this. Does that mean the AEOA has to accept that? Or... I'm not clear, Commissioner Nelson, what the effect of this is. Or am I misunderstanding what you just said? It sounds like there are two St. Louis County commissioners spots and an additional spot for an elected official, and we're choosing to fill that third spot.
Commissioner Nelson?
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Jewell, that is exactly what we are choosing to do.
Any other commissioner comments, questions? Commissioner Jewell?
Well, it does... I mean, I don't know if we normally decide for other organization... I mean, I happen to agree with your argument, Commissioner Nelson, that the redo of the bylaws was, is a problem, was a problem. I don't disagree with that. I am a little confounded by our ability to simply put somebody in a position that is not open to us. But maybe the fallout on the range is going to... I don't know.
Deputy Administrator Fitzner?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jewell, in the discussions with Mr. Carlson last week, he indicated that this was an acceptable approach for us to fill that third spot, as suggested by Commissioner Nelson. So he was kind of acknowledging some of the challenges we've had over the last couple of years with the appointments, but opening it up, that third spot for this appointment from the county itself.
So why isn't somebody from AEOA here?
Again, I can only refer to what Commissioner Nelson has indicated, and Mr. Carlson said he had a conflict today and would not be able to make it.
Any other commissioner comments, questions? You know, the one thing I have for the three commissioners that are on here of Commissioner Djukovic, McDonald, and Nelson is that there won't be any conflicts. I think we'll be under the magnified glass of attendance, for sure, on this one, to make sure that we're at them and present, and if we can't make it, let the other commissioners know. So you guys all right with that? All right, good. Good. I do think it's important. Commissioner Nelson?
Mr. Chair, you know, I wasn't going to belabor this, okay? Because we do have a solution here that gets us through to August, that gives us an opportunity to have these discussions between now and then. But, you know, I can feel the angst here, okay? And here's the bottom line. We are in this organization with a number of other counties. If y'all think that I believe that my neighboring counties are good partners, the truth is, I don't. They are not good partners in many, many things that we do. Because, and being the benevolent big brother is an issue for me. It just is. And it's not just in this organization, but it's in a number of organizations. Here we have an opportunity to fill it, to get to that August timeframe, to give commissioners an opportunity to address some of the concerns. I will tell you that, as I look around this board, I don't see commissioners missing things very often. But this past year, we had one commissioner running for a federal office, I might add, quite successfully, where he can do a lot of good things for AEOA. Number two, we had another commissioner that had some very, very significant health concerns. And the fact that my neighboring counties would somehow take advantage of that and somehow say that we didn't have an attendance record there that justified us having three positions, Mr. Chair, that is just absurd. I promise you, I will not miss a meeting, Lord willing. And I don't believe my other, my fellow commissioners up here are going to be missing meetings in either. But the other commissioners from the other counties, they never miss, because that's their per diem for the day. This board does not get per diems. This board, again, every member of this board represents 28,000 people. It is not always easy to be at every meeting that we're required to be at. Many, many days, I know myself, Commissioner Djukovic, in the past couple of years, we talk to each other and we have to pick and choose. I can make this one, I can make that one. We work together. I know we're going to be working together with Commissioner McDonald on that as well. We may not all three be able to be at every meeting, but we're going to find a way to get a commissioner or two with the understanding that one of our commissioners represents more people than the other 26 positions on the board. I would also point out that the third elected position, Commissioner Jewell, I know you're concerned about it, but that third elected position was vacated by the chair of AEOA, Mr. Clecher, who got defeated in an election. So that seat is absolutely open, and that is the seat that I'm proposing that we take at this point. Again, I have general agreement with their executive director. I am sure that we will have discussion about this at our very first AEOA board meeting, and I look forward to that discussion, because some of my neighboring county commissioners are going to hear, get an earful from me on the fact that these three positions are very, very, very important to St. Louis County. I'm going to also point out one last thing, because people might ask, "Well, Commissioner Nelson, why weren't you on that board?" I was the alternate. I did attend as the alternate. And for those commissioners that were here several years ago, Commissioner Rukavina asked that he be placed on the AEOA board. I gave up my position at that point on AEOA board, because at the time, Commissioner Rocker was the chair. The third position went to the fifth district commissioner. So these... So these circumstances that have brought us to this point in time are unusual. They're unusual for this Board. And again, I believe the attendance and all of the other pieces will be stabilized with the three Commissioners that are being presented on this resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Nelson, any other Commissioner comments, questions? Seeing none, let's move this to a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. All right, it's the end of the regular meeting. We'll move right into the Committee of the Whole. Is that all right with you? We're going to do the tour between the Committee Hall, or you want to try to get that?
I can see if people are... She's up there?
She's up there.
Okay, so seeing that we have staff up there to take us through, we will first adjourn this meeting and then go visit the law library.
Mr. Chair, as you had asked us to take tours of various businesses and different organizations that serve the people of St. Louis County, I have to tell you that I have a tremendous amount of pride in our law libraries as they sit today. I know Attorney Rubin has a tremendous amount of pride in our law libraries as they sit today. And I believe we have one of our judges from St. Louis County, Judge Paglasetti, is up at our law library. I can tell you that since we started, six years ago we started staffing Attorney Rubin, something like that?
Six years.
Six years ago, we started staffing halftime, the law library in Virginia and the law library in Hibbing, splitting time. The law library in Duluth, of course, is staffed on a full-time basis. It is amazing the amount of utilization that these small law libraries up north, because they are small, satellites of really what the Duluth Law Library is. But the availability of Westlaw, the availability of all of the resource materials, I would, I can tell you that on a regular basis, there are individuals using the law library here in Hibbing. And I want to thank Commissioner Jugovic for serving on that law library Board the last couple of years here, because they continue to do some very good work. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to the tour.
Chair Commissioner Boyle, members of the Board, just frame this before we go up there, so you understand. Law libraries traditionally were for lawyers and judges, okay? Rarely would a non-lawyer or non-judge go into a law library. Everything changed, because people, for whatever reason, can't access lawyers as easily as they could in the past. And much of what we had in books in a law library have been replaced by computer research. Documents are on computer, so it's more friendly, it's more available to pro se litigants or people who just choose if they maybe can't hire a lawyer or choose not to. So six years ago, it was Administrator Gray and Commissioner Nelson who motivated this. And our, the law library is still somewhat under the county attorney's office, is kind of a hybrid administration and county attorney's office. But we received a direction to consolidate, shrink the size, get rid of the material we didn't need, keep what is essential, but at the same time, enhance services. And that directive came from the Chief Justice of Minnesota Supreme Court. It came from the state law library to help us provide a better service to the citizens in St. Louis County. So we did that. So we have a new model that is really something that is looked at by other county as something to strive for. And we have an additional challenge. Many counties have just one law library and one courthouse. We have three law libraries. Duluth is staffed full-time because of the usage, and on the range, a full-time position is split between Hibbing and Virginia, as Commissioner Nelson told you. So it's working. Today, you'll hear from Dory Streit, who is the Head of Legal Aid, and she is the entity that has been contracted by the law library Board to provide this service. We are also hoping to hear from Judge Gary Paglasetti, and he will tell you how it has, how the court system has benefited by this service that was begun by this Board and this Administration. So with that introduction, we could probably go upstairs.
Mr. Chair, just to point out, so that our taxpayers understand, this is not supported by general levy dollars. This is not supported by general levy dollars. I want to make sure everyone understands, this is supported by the fines, the fees, different things that are put in place by the court, and what a tremendous benefit. Again, no property tax monies in the law library.
I had a motion from Commissioner Nelson to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Jewell, all those in favor, adjourn. Please say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right.
Talk about the tour we just took and read that into the record. Or give me an opportunity. I would sooner feel that. But it was written by Gary Paglasetti, Judge Paglasetti, okay? Or written by him. That is unusual for him to put down all of this, by the way. This is for the record.
Yeah. A lot of times I'm 119. I don't know why. About the 28, which I have a hell of a service. I don't know. I'm pushing the car seven forty-four.
Yeah, it's weird. It's...
Yeah, yeah.
Patrick, if you're going to wait for our Administrator to finish his sentence, we're going to be here a while.
Mr. Gray.
KG. The more famous KG. The more famous KG. He's ours.
All right, Commissioners, we will start Committee of the Whole meeting. Can we have, we'll call, please.
Commissioner Jewell.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Commissioner Jugovic.
Present.
And Chair Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you for the first outreach of seeing good services that are complementing our county folks at home. We're going to put this in the note. Judge Paglasetti, just, Judge Friday just showed us through our law library and educated us on all the good things that have happened. Users, just over 800 folks in Virginia area and over 500 folks in the Duluth area that in part probably pre-ordered any services that are now available to have. This is not, for the services that we provide, it's not entirely mandated by the state, but we go above and beyond, and I was just educated that other counties are now following same suit as what we're doing. So once again, we were the trendsetters in such an important piece. I will put in record, and Commissioner Nelson asked me to read this, this is what the judge spoke to us about in his handwritten notes, which I heard is unique for him to do. Just so we have this, the St. Louis County Law Library located here at the courthouse has been in existence for many years. It's changed location and smaller size in the past, but still provides invaluable service not only to lawyers, but also to citizens at large in northeastern St. Louis County. Though, as I said, it's not as large as in the past, it does contain a number of publications. Previously, it was, provides a wide range of information on legal topics that cannot be found in a public library, for instance. As in many aspects of daily life, many of the written materials have been replaced by electronic access, had no charge for people seeking to use these sources. Seldom a day goes by that there isn't someone in the library. There's resources along with staff provided by Legal Aid and the self-help portal provided by the court system go along the way in providing assistance to those who choose to represent themselves, or just those people trying to find some legal information to help better understand the various process and paperwork. These three resources have been a great assistance to the staff of the Court Administrator's Office. It's seeking input from staff to find the law library to be a big help for people who have never gone through the process in the court system before. Litigants receive assistance in finding the right forms, filing them out and printing them on the copy machine provided, a resource that is not only available to individuals, as well at times, information on how to have the paper served on our proper parties. Past valuable court staff time was taken up to the point of people, pointing the people in the right direction, and oftentimes, it's resulted in frustration for the public because there was so much, there's only so much the court staff could do, as was prohibited from giving legal advice or assistance on procedures and proper forms. Therefore, this, having the St. Louis County Library and its services it provides, available not only to the lawyers, but citizens, provides resources, information that can reduce frustration in those using it. We're very fortunate to have the library here in the courthouse available and open to the public. Thank you, Commissioner Nelson, for our first installment on that. And Commissioners, again, if you could give us a guesstimate of in the next week, where you want us to go? One or two? It's up to you guys, but I'd like to have that done and work with our staff on that. Excited for more, more understanding on St. Louis County. All right, seeing that, we have the consent agenda in front of us, Commissioners? By Commissioner McDonald? Do we have any items to be pulled? Commissioner Jewell.
As I pointed out, there are two items related to the town of Friedenberg, number three and number nine. I continue to be concerned about the behavior. I'm not going to pull them down, but they, Mr. Sitche, who was here and is a member of the Board, continued his kind of behavior that is part of the reason why I feel they're untrustworthy. So, at any rate, just want to point that out.
All right, I would like number 11 pulled. Any other Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor, signature aye.
Aye.
Close. The regular agenda, start with Public Works. Commissioner Jewell.
Thank you, Chair Boyle. One item under Public Works and Transportation today, we have an award of bids for a gravel road investment program project in Pike Lake Township and an organized township 57-16. It's Board Letter 19-36. It's a resolution awarding a gravel road investment project in Pike Township to the low bidders of Yuland Brothers of Cloquet, and I would move that.
Second.
You're going to move it?
I'll move it.
Good job. I'll second it then.
Beat me to the point.
Well... Yeah, you go. Commissioner Jugovic and Commissioners, the action before the Board is to award a gravel road investment program project, as was identified by the Chair to Yuland Brothers. You'll note that the price is just under $600,000, which is significantly below. We're very pleased with the, and pleasantly surprised with the bid. And again, a number of bidders, and whenever you have good contractors going after a project early in the season and you've found a project that makes it a little more logistically feasible for them, we continue to reap those benefits. I would say that this is a significant project and an example of our continued commitment towards our gravel road programs and gravel roads, and this investment is paying dividends. And so again, the action before the Board, the formal action, is to vote to award the contract to the parent low bidder, Yuland Brothers, in the amount of $598,000.
Commissioner Nelson.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Jugovic, first, thank you for your continued commitment to the gravel road system and for this Board, for their continued commitment to the gravel road system. This is, as we continue to build out these grip surface roads, one of the, one of the significant benefits of that is that it also is helping us to expand our chloriding on additional roads, because we're not adding roads to our chloride, to our annual chloriding. But with these grip roads, you don't have to use as much chloride, so you get to stretch that chloride on those other roads. So what we're seeing is, is a more inclusive system of chloriding on our existing gravel roads as we continue to do this impregnated gravel system. These grip roads, we've been doing now for, I believe, six or seven years, eight years maybe. This is, this is good stuff. On 1,600 miles of gravel, this is, this is something that I don't always appreciate when Administrator Gray comes up with acronyms for our, for our projects, but the gravel road improvement program, GRIP, that one I really like. That one is, because it is making a real difference out there on our gravel road system. Thank you, Chair Commissioner Jugovic.
And he came up with GRIP?
He did.
Okay. Mr. Chair, the context was, I needed to get a grip on a few things, and that's when it popped into mind. So it really was probably a byproduct of, not a very flattering comment, that really made sense, but I think it resonated with the Board in all seriousness. This is an investment in our roads, and it does stretch our dollars further, and this Board has been tremendously supportive of it, and we are able to expand that program with the implementation of the transportation sales tax. So we are almost double what we were looking at, I think, in terms of investment from five or six years ago. And as Commissioner Nelson pointed out, thank you for your continued support of the program. I know that Public Works is very excited, because this is a significant part of our road system. We rely on it in a big way. We have 1,600 miles of gravel roads, which dwarfs anybody anywhere, which is a familiar theme for St. Louis County in terms of just geography and logistics. So I know that Director Falls, he was very pleased with the bids when he shared them with Commissioner Jugovic and myself, and we saw this originally. It's nice to see we can stretch our dollars even further. Any other questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair.
Thank you. Next up, we have Commissioner Olson under Finance.
Thank you, Chair Boyle. So before us, we have Board Letter number 1927, funding to the Joseph P. Gomer Educational Exhibit and Curriculum Project, and I will move it.
Support.
supported by Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Gray, will you please...
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Olson. The action before the Board is a request for funding to support the Joseph P. Gomer Educational Exhibit and Curriculum Project. This was, I believe, originally brought to Commissioner Jewell and then to Commissioners Jugovic and Olson, as discussion preceded by Scott Lyons, who's part of a group that are the friends of Joe Gomer, who are looking to not only amplify the awareness of this individual's unique contributions, and there is a statue, Joe Gomer statue, at the Duluth International Airport, that they're also responsible for maintaining. But as a notable individual in terms of literally a national hero, who, by the way, this Board had the pleasure of recognizing and he dignifying us with time to talk about his experiences as a Tuskegee Airmen, which is just a renowned group. And so the object of this exhibit is to make it more portable and to have more outreach and curriculum about the contributions of our Black Americans in service to this country, and uniquely, Joe Gomer is a Tuskegee Airmen who was part of that, and he's spoken out in his lifetime to students about prejudice and segregation and yet continued to move forward. So it's fitting on the heels of Martin Luther King Day that we be bringing this forward. So I thank Commissioners Jewell, Olson, and Jugovic for working with this and working with Deputy Administrator Fritzinger. I think the exhibit funding and the curriculum development will be ongoing, and the $60,000 may stretch a little bit, but this initial ask and the contribution of the, of the county, the ask is for $10,000. So it goes a long ways to getting a real kickstart to the, to this effort.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner...
Madam Chair, thank you. Just a couple of things. I sat in on, on the meeting for, with friends of Joe Gomer. Very interesting. My first knowledge of this was through the Veterans Hall, but we've got a really, really unique thing here. We've got Joe Gomer, who is a war hero, Tuskegee Airmen, and looked up to by so many and did so many good things. I just think it's important we get the curriculum out, we get as many kids to understand exactly the role that Tuskegee Airmen played, and what a, what a wonderful way to do this by having a traveling exhibit, some curriculum...
having a traveling exhibit, some curriculum, all kinds of different good things. But this is, I support this. I think this is important, and this is something that I think that St. Louis County can wrap its arms around and be very, very proud of, because this is one of our own.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. I just have a couple of questions. I mean, there's a few people in your life, when you shake their hand and you remember it the rest of your life. Major Gomer was one of those individuals in my life. Absolutely no problem with supporting that. My questions go a little bit more in detail, so with, and you know, Commissioners that have been part of this project may be able for me to answer, but, so we're looking at a $10,000 ask. Looks like the proposal's for $60,000. In going through this, can you tell me where the other dollars allocated to this are coming from? What do we know?
So, I don't know specifically, but as I understand, this is, as Administrator Gray said, the kickoff of this, that the folks who are part of the committee will be really working to raise the other funds. I think it will come from individuals and foundations in the area, and I have no doubt that they'll be able, with who's part of this, to raise that, those funds. The other thing that I'd say is it's, as the letter points out, this is a collaboration with the Bong and, and the Historical Society, and really is seen as a regional kind of a piece that can have impact on schoolchildren all over the region. So, it's a collaboration. Then the resolution itself says that the committee will raise the money, but also will direct where the money will go.
Just to follow, I don't, do you have an answer?
I, I was at, Madam Chair, I was, I was at the meeting with Friends of Joe Gomer, and they said this will be the start. They will be doing fundraisers. They believe that, that this will be something that they should be able to accomplish in, I don't want to say short order, but I do believe the funding mechanisms will be in place, and I think they've had enough communication from different groups, organizations, saying, yeah, well, you get this started, and we'll jump on board with you. I know the DTA is going to, it sounds like, do a bus stop where he got on the bus every day and didn't talk about himself, but in the West End of Duluth, and they thought that was really, really something, that they could have a shelter, is that what they call the shelters? So, they're going to do something with that, but it just didn't talk about himself. He was, I just thought it was a great story, that this gentleman was all about, you know, educating, but not making it about Joe Gomer. So, yeah, this will be the impetus, this will be the start, and, and I do believe that they should be able to get this going, and it'll snowball.
I guess my other question is, you know, with our funding, dramatic funding for the St. Louis County Historical Society and Veterans Memorial Hall, you know, I would, my expectation was, I thought that maybe we would have Director Coombs at this meeting. Are these artifacts not stored in our Historical Society right now?
There are some. I don't believe all, but I believe I had a, a little bit of a packet, and they, what they would like to start off with is a case to put the items in. So, I believe some are on hand, they have things, but not sure exactly how to display them without a case, so I think this will be the, the start. And again, I think they'd like to see it travel.
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Olson. Look, I, I, first of all, we, we, we as a board have donated money to both the statue of Mr. Gomer and to the gentleman who was a prisoner of war, and both of those are displayed at the, at the airport. I'm, I'm supportive of donating to this. I'm, I'm concerned that others, that others need to take part as well. So, not wanting to, to talk about the $10,000 at all, okay, but I would like to put a challenge out to Mayor Larson. If she was to put in $5,000, I would, I would bring another $5,000 from this board to match her $5,000, if she's willing to put in $5,000, because then these folks are going to have one-third of their goal, they got to raise the other two-thirds privately, and the other ask that I would have, if this is going to be a traveling display, okay? I want to make certain that this display makes it to our courthouses up north, because too often our traveling displays have traveled in one place. They've been rolled around the floor in the Duluth, in the Heritage and Arts Center, and folks, I, I, just a couple minutes ago, I showed you the, the display put together by the Virginianary Historical Society, and, and that's a constantly rotating piece that, that we fund, St. Louis County funds. But, but the bottom line is, unless it reaches out and touches people, it doesn't do us any good to create it. So, I, I would be very supportive, Madam Chair, and, and to the other members, again, Chair Commissioner Olson, if you bring this to the mayor and she's willing to kick in $5,000 out of her contingency, bring it back, and I'll be supportive of an additional $5,000, not, not associated with this at all, of making certain that, that when we're involved in these projects, that, let's be straight about it, I'm going to say they're very much, very impactful in the city of Duluth, and I expect the city of Duluth to be part of that game, too. Okay? So, that's where I'm at. I, I, I'm very supportive. When Mr. Gomer was in front of us several years ago, I believe Commissioner Jewell, you were, you were on the board when he, when he was in front of us. And one of the most impactful presentations and discussions that I think we've ever had. And just when you, when we talk about the long and proud tradition here in St. Louis County of, of veterans, I mean, Commissioner McDonald from Ely, more veterans per capita than any other city in the United States of America in World War II. We, we talk about veterans in this county. I believe we still have over 19,000 veterans living in St. Louis County. This is not just a tribute to Mr. Gomer. This is a tribute to all of them, the dedication that they put into serving this great country. And it is interesting that, that we can go all the way back to the Civil War, when, when people left that train station from St. Louis County, before we were a state, but they left that train station to go off and fight in the Civil War. So, we have a long and proud heritage. I just want others to be a part of supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson.
Well, I just want to say a couple of things. One, I, I have no doubt that with this kickstart and with the possibility of what Commissioner Nelson has suggested, that raising this money is easily possible. And I do want to say one thing about Joe Gomer that I think is why his story is powerful and why developing a curriculum around it. I, I spent two weeks this fall after the election doing the Civil Rights Trail in, in the South, and so I went to Nashville and then to Birmingham and Montgomery, Selma, and then back up to Memphis, and one of the things that pops out in that visit is the Tuskegee Airmen, and the fact that we had a segregated military, and that these men could only fly in a segregated part of the Air Force and weren't allowed to be part of the rest of it. And that the story of the tenacity of these folks who, who were dishonored in every possible way in their communities to fight and protect for the United States and for Europe is a powerful statement about who they were as people, and the kind of impediments they continued after they returned. Many of them, when they first came back, couldn't vote, weren't allowed to use the toilet, couldn't drink at the same water fountain. And while if you come to Duluth or northeastern Minnesota, it's less of an impact, we didn't have whites-only drinking fountains, but we had other, less obvious kinds of racism that were key and underlying. And so, this story that folks want to tell about this man's life and what he overcame, even as Commissioner Nelson points out quietly, and Commissioner Jugovic, and not in a loud way, just living his life, riding that bus every day, which is kind of amazing, supposedly with absolute regularity, is really a powerful story. And so, right at the moment, those artifacts are kind of stored out of sight, and this will bring them out and tell a story about the incredible perseverance of African-Americans in this society in the 1940s and after. And it's a story that's really important to tell, and every kid should see it. I thought I knew a lot, and the tour of the Civil Rights Trail was eye-opening. Little did I know that there was a reign of terror in the United States for more than 70 years, as people were lynched across the South and in the North, as we know well in Duluth. I just didn't fully comprehend, or that to speak out meant that you had to take your life in hand to say even anything, as Emmett Till simply said something to a white woman, and they killed him and dumped him in the river. That's just one story, and there are 4,000, almost 5,000 other stories like that, which happened in the South, 200 and some in the North in that time period from 1877 till the Civil Rights Act in 1964. So, that's why I really want to support Joe Gomer's story and tell that story of that heroism that is really important to hold up. Took us a long time. You know, the Tuskegee Airmen weren't something we talked about back 20 years ago, but took it's only recently that we've started to talk about and noticed those people in our midst. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair Olson. I just would like to move this without recommendation, just because it is a good news story. I'd like it at the next general meeting on February 5th. And also, I would ask Administration to ask Director Coombs to please come and present to us. She's the main person on this, and I would like that.
That's, I'm the one who moved it, so that's fine.
I was not a supporter of them, or I supported them.
You did. Yes, I did.
I'm sorry.
I never forget things like that.
No, my mind was, and I apologize, Chair Commissioner Olson, my mind was on another piece of, of this county's proud history, as, as Commissioner Jewell was talking about the African-Americans, but I happen to have a number of friends in the Boys' Fort Tribal Community, and I know a number of people also in the Fond du Lac Tribal Community, and, and you know, the tremendous sacrifices also of our, of our Native American population in, in World War II, in the Korean War, and, and others, Vietnam War, and continues. I try and make it up there every year for their, for their Veterans Day celebration, and it is amazing, again, per capita, how many of, of our tribal units, the tribal units that predominantly, Boys' Fort being the one that's predominantly in St. Louis County, how many of their band members have served in the military in this great nation? So, that was on my mind, and I was trying to articulate it before I started this discussion, but I, I hope that, I hope that somewhere down the line, we have a spot in that military, in that Veterans Hall that we have down there, that, that also recognizes the tremendous contributions of them as well. Thank you, Chair Commissioner Olson.
Thank you.
A little off the side note here, I apologize, Commissioner Olson, but off of that, there's a very good museum in Boys' Fort off the casino, and, I mean, that might be a spot we could go to. It's, they give a significant amount of time to the veterans of Boys' Fort.
Chair Commissioner Olson and, and Board Chair Boyle, that was exactly where my mind was going to in asking Commissioner McDonald if perhaps somewhere, if we get close to the Vermillion Village at Boys' Fort, that, that museum that they have up there is a, that is a treasure, and one that certainly deserves this board promoting in any which way we possibly can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, but in struggling to, we have a board meeting and embarrassed, and I think that would be something, I'll reach out to Chair, Tribal Chair Chavers and try to align that. I think that's something that is very worthwhile and serves a whole lot of people in St. Louis County. At the new Tribal Council swearing in, the numbers of veterans, as Commissioner Nelson said, that were introduced there was amazing. I mean, it was two or three at virtually every table, and I think that's an important part that we need to continue to keep on the radar.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, I'll just add, it, I think one of the most powerful pieces of the, this year's inauguration of our governor was a moment at the very end in which the honor guard, which included an American Indian man carrying a staff with all the services and eagle feathers, stood behind the drum group as they drummed us out of the room. And it was an incredibly powerful moment, and it really a sign of this, the way the tribes honor folks who served in the military, and it clearly is something that's worth highlighting. I will also point out, as we all know, that we have the highest ranking Native American ever elected to public office in the United States as our Lieutenant Governor, and that was duly noted as part of that ceremony, both by the person carrying that staff and by the fact that she dressed in clothing from her native tradition. So, it was a very powerful moment, and I agree with Commissioner Nelson, it's something worth holding up.
Commissioners, we have the resolution in front of us. It's been moved without recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Aye.
Commissioner Olson, we are on to Commissioner's discussion items and reports.
Thank you, Chair Commissioner Boyle. As your representative to the St. Louis County Planning Commission, Planning Department, I will be meeting later on this week with Director Hayden, as well as Physical Planning Director Mary Anderson, and looking to kick off the VRBO discussion here in St. Louis County. I will point out that Commissioner Olson and I were there at County's Association the other night, and, and since about a year ago, when I, when I first started talking about VRBOs and, and the importance of this board's picking a spot to deal with it, the, two of our neighboring counties, one in Cook has, has already dealt with a VRBO ordinance. Lake County's VRBO ordinance is coming out in February next month. It was my Lake County's VRBO ordinance is coming out in February, next month, is my understanding. And I was shocked. We did a cursory review in St. Louis County and found over five hundred VRBOs in St. Louis County, and then were informed that Cook County has over six hundred VRBOs in their register. Okay? Six hundred folks. So my cursory review of St. Louis County, with my limited skills on this piece of equipment and others, five hundred, we probably have close to two thousand. If six hundred is the indicator in Cook County, St. Louis County has over two thousand. I can tell you that. Now, I'll use that number, even though we have not identified them yet, the truth is, there's no way that we have less than Cook County. I can tell you that, without even guessing about it. So Commissioners, any of your thoughts on VRBOs? I hope that you convey those through Administration. We're going to try and come back with something for good discussion, some thoughts and some other things back for very good discussion. My hope is to have those back here in the late February, early March timeframe. That is very aggressive, but I want to point out to this board, if we are going to act on this, we have an opportunity here now to act on it, and I think we need to get that into place and start addressing some of the concerns related to VRBOs here in our county. And believe me, Mark St. Lawrence, our Director of Environmental Services, will be a key component to the discussions, because our VRBOs are going to also, one of the biggest concerns I have is the septic systems that are serving those vacation rentals. I also want to point out that I found one, just to give you an example, I found one up on one of our major recreational lakes, sixteen hundred dollars a night. It's already booked for June, July, and August. It's already booked for June, July, and August. Every day, every day. And those are in direct competition, many of them, with our resort industry, that we all know that resort industry is struggling throughout the state, and especially here, where we have a number of resorts. So we owe it to our resort owners to make sure that everybody's on a level playing field as well. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Look for something on that in a very aggressive timeframe, but again, I certainly want to hear from, as we begin these discussions, again, Director Hayden, Mary Anderson, Administration, please get your thoughts into them in terms of what you believe would be important components of it. I have currently three pages of notes that I have put together over the last couple of months, whenever I think of something else. I have to tell you that I think ours might be a little bit unique in one sense. I'm even contemplating when these dwellings are rented out to groups, say, as large as twenty, you know, do we have a fire marshal involved? Is there, have we had any of those discussions? Because this board, one of the things that you, that all of us swear in our oath, which several of us just did, okay, is public safety. And so I started to think about all of the other pieces that are component parts of this, and duties, I believe, of this board to ensure the public safety. And one of the ways that we can do that is to make certain that these units are safe when people, people don't get, when people sign up for a VRBO in St. Louis County, they should have the assurance of this board that that unit is safe for the environment, safe for their family, and a part of the community that is very well accepted here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for your work on that, Commissioner Olson. Forward to come. Commissioner Jewell.
Administrator Gray, didn't we put together a whole proposal, so we have something that can be gotten out fairly quickly?
Chair, Chair Boyle, Commissioners, we've actually had two discussions on this in the past two and a half years, as recently as just twelve to fifteen months ago, I believe. And we do have some really good background information that would feed this process. I think the collective will of the board, based on my discussions with a number of you, is to do something reasonable and prudent, and you did reflect that in some of the narrative and the comprehensive land use plan, so that it accommodates this next step on more specifics around VRBO usage and how that relates to land use. And I think Director Hayden has some good ideas on that, too. So I want to thank the entire board for sharing your thoughts on this, and I think we can make this, bring back something that's concrete and thoughtful in the next three months, for sure.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, it was not reasonable to bring it forward in front of the comprehensive plan. I hope everyone understands that was, that is the starting point to getting going on this, because until we had something concrete in that comprehensive plan, it didn't seem reasonable to bring it forward. But with today's discussion on the comp plan, I wanted to kickstart it right now, because I think it's something that is absolutely on the front burner. And I think Commissioner Olson and I certainly heard that from a couple of our neighboring counties who have really same or similar types of issues to the ones that we have.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, move adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned. Thank you much, Commissioner.